Five thirty. To follow order, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, Venice City Commission meeting. Would everyone please rise to the flag? Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Langria.
Here.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Kribel.
Here.
Lisa, would you read, please read the open public meeting notice?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Uh, would you please read the live streaming announcement?
The city of Venice offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access. Publicly participate remotely will be muted during the commission meeting, except during the public comment portions of the meeting. Any person attempting to disrupt the meeting may be denied access at the discretion of the city. In the event, remote access is unavailable due to a technology malfunction or other reason beyond the city's control. The city will not pause or stop live streaming. Will the stop live meetings? City commission meetings are held in person and the public is welcome to attend. The best way to ensure an individual's ability to publicly comment is to attend in person. So that the comments may be made in the event of a technology malfunction. The city reserves the right to discontinue offering public comment via remote access at the discretion for any future meetings.
Thank you. Uh, we have no presentations this evening. Uh, we have no department head presentations this meeting. I believe we're going to be starting those up again soon. We, you have that in mind, I believe so. Um, we have, uh, nothing scheduled for Capitol discussion. Um, and we will be approving, um, minutes from September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting. Uh, we do not have any ordinances for introduction. Um, we have an ordinance for a public hearing and adoption ordinance is twenty twenty four dash zero two four. This ordinance amends chapter one forty nine dash two of the code which governs our residential properties merchant till license. The ordinance will be setting the registration fee for, for all size, um, rental properties to seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. Any questions on that?
That's for short term rental properties.
Short term rental properties, correct. That's merchant till license for short term rental property.
Mayor, I have, which is, uh, it will be a public comment on that?
It'll be, uh, yes, if, at the end. Um, we have resolutions and contracts. Uh, by consent. The first is twenty twenty four dash two nine six. The first resolution is a chapter one fifty nine. This is, uh, D L P S Emergency Management Assistance, twenty twenty three, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So this is accepting, um, that grant. Um, twenty, next is twenty twenty four dash two nine seven. This resolution confirms that we have reviewed best practices, twenty twenty four. Best practices inventory and we are in compliance to receive one hundred percent of that funding. We do that every year. Uh, twenty twenty four dash two nine eight is a resolution accepting uh, the award of the F F Y twenty four emergency performance grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Twenty twenty four dash two nine nine, this resolution accepts the retirement of Mary Garfinkel. Mary works at the Public Works Department. She began working here in nineteen ninety. We wish her best, uh, in her retirement. Lance, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just that Mary's been there a long time, thirty four years, um, integral part of, of keeping the boys in line over there sometimes. So, uh, she will be missed, um, and hard to replace. We're, we're finding that out. We've got interviews coming up in a couple of weeks, so. Uh, good luck to her. We wish her well and, uh, thanks for her thirty four years of dedication to the Venice City.
Thank you. So, um, we will be adding on the bench tonight. Uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash three hundred. That asphalt payment. That is the asphalt payment, right? But it's blackjack?
Yes, for blackjack. This is for, um, project out of Lafayette Avenue. We just redid the other side of the street. There's a crack opening up. It's been there for a while. It's gotten kind of be problematic right out in front of the school. So we're just going to do a repair there. Uh, four foot wide by whatever length it is to repair that and mill it up and repair that section.
Okay. Thank you. The resolution, um, uh, as you described, not to exceed the amount of twenty one thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. Uh, I believe we're adding, uh, resolution three oh one. Correct?
Lisa?
Well, I don't know.
After discussion.
After discussion.
After discussion, yeah.
Same with three oh two.
Same with three oh two. Um, we'll be, uh, approving bills and payroll this evening and we have four items listed for discussion. Uh, Commissioner Langria, if you want to take the first one?
Pedal assist.
Pedal assist, bike ordinance, extending and extending.
And extended bike hours. Yeah. So we've been talking about, we had a, a woman come in last month or two weeks ago at our meeting. Looking at increasing the hours of, of biking on the boardwalk in the summertime. Uh, right now it's limited after six P M. Um, there are no bikes are allowed. I know we want to certainly keep it open for walkers, but I think if we did something maybe after, after eight P M. Uh, I don't know if we've come together on a, on a time yet, on to, to allow that, but I think later in the evening is, is a lot of people still use it to go down to Atlantic City in the summertime, um, back and forth. So there's, I heard several complaints this summer from people getting pushed off the boardwalk and, you know, they've always used it in the past as we were enforcing it. So right now you're not allowed to ride from six P M to six A M on the boardwalk. So I would think we would change that to an open discussion on the hours. It's just something that.
So you're talking about summertime?
Yes.
And still day.
In the wintertime, they're allowed to.
They are in the dark?
Yeah.
It's still light till eight P M.
Daylight hours. Except for Saturday and Sunday, July first, the Labor Day.
Right.
So what about Saturday and Sunday? Which it would be open to evenings, I guess, throughout.
Can I clarify what the word says?
Yeah, it is dusk, daylight hours, correct?
Daylight hours.
Right.
Except between Memorial Day and Labor Day, Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Six A M to noon.
Right.
Six A M to noon.
Six A M to noon.
Daylight hours and Saturday.
On Saturday and Sunday, you can't ride from
so.
Six, six P M.
No, no, Saturday and Sunday, you can only ride Sunday.
Right, correct.
Till Monday.
Right.
Something to where.
Six to eight, like six P M?
Add. What, you want to add evening hours on the weekends up until like nine P M or something, ten P M?
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard to follow.
So up at after ten P M or, or shut it down at ten P M?
Shut it down.
What's the issue with having bicyclists up there? Cause it's lit.
Well, one of the things that we have a concern with is juveniles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hanging out or certain criminal element.
Understood.
Using it as a path.
Bicycles and habits to enter and leave that.
Okay.
So, and I think.
So the, we could do it in, in the summertime. We could allow it on the weekends up to ten P M or something like that.
That's what I was thinking, like eight, eight to ten.
On, yeah, cause then that gives the walkers time while it's still late out.
Just kind of just came up is on holidays. So those three holidays, Memorial Day, July, Labor Day, if they're on a weekday. We struggle with those afternoon and early evening hours with tons of bicycles out there and people trying to navigate, you know, two of them on the beach areas.
Right, because everybody stays late.
That's the intent of kind of cutting up this. When I was a, you know, young and pop class one back in the nineties. This is, or this was
Much more restricted.
Better than it is now.
Right.
It was every day at six A M to ten A M and that was it.
I remember that.
From May first to like, uh, through, through September, and then we kind of little by little made it less restrictive.
Yeah, I think it's.
You gotta also keep in mind the intent is we're walking narrow, you know, it plus the people coming to and from the beach. You know, kids and so forth using those showers up in the boardwalk. So, you know, you can allow the bicycles up there. Yeah. Most people are going to buy my the law and ride in a cautious manner, but I get those that, you know, don't.
Right.
I think they're toward franks that could cause problems. So.
I agree during the, the beach hours, you know, twelve to, to six P M, definitely no bikes. Cause people walking back and forth. I agree with that completely. Um.
But, but like again, during those like a, a busy and holiday weekday or even Friday.
You're.
You have the, the work that's at daylight hours.
Yeah, I think we could probably do better at, at setting a time instead of daylight hours. Wouldn't that be, you think that's a better way to handle that?
Yeah, I think it's almost go eight, nine o'clock, ten o'clock in the summertime.
Yeah, riding with the bikes at night would be after whatever period we think people are going to be up there walking. A lot of people walk right after dinner. If you walk two dinners, they're coming back eight, nine o'clock. So maybe it would be, you know, nine to eleven. I don't know if it's just an hour. I don't know if that's even worthwhile doing.
Whatever it is, I think you should be specific with the time though. Daylight hours is open to interpretation and it changes every day.
Right, right.
And what does that mean? Sunset doesn't mean when it gets dark, because it takes another twenty minutes, half an hour after the sun is down before it's really dark. And you'll have people who will argue with that.
Be in court arguing with Nicole about what's.
With somebody, so, yeah.
Really more specifically.
And the intent is to keep people safe.
The season up nine, nine P M. It's kind of what we use as a guide.
Okay, all right, in the summertime, nine P M, so, all right.
You know.
Well, we can just set that.
Weekdays, you know, afternoon, they're going to be, you know, kicking people off.
Right.
But right now, Monday through Friday, the way we enforce it, Monday through Friday is basically up until nine P M. After nine P M, you're going to get extra.
Get off the boardwalk, okay.
On the weekends, it's six A M too.
I don't think the issue is with wintertime hours. I think the wintertime hours are working fine.
Yeah.
It's more the summertime when people want to ride.
And the shoulder seats, you know.
Yeah, seven days.
Right.
May through September. And then Labor Day, like there is a solar.
Oh my God, all the signs have to get in.
I, I was about to mention that. All the signs have to be managed somehow, either changed or labeled. I hated that we had labels on the last set. But we were actually talking about redoing those signs to make them a little bit more compact and to add a larger presence of no dogs allowed, because we still see a lot of that.
Yeah.
And we see a lot of, um, so if the hours are going to change, we have to change all fifty signs. I think that's about how many hours, something like that. I think it's twenty four times two. But.
There's two at each.
Yeah, so.
Cross over.
But the, but I, I, I think we could give it a try. I would, my thought would be eight to ten as, as a evening hour.
Um, during the week and then weekends, no.
Yeah, because Atlantic City has no, no, no wait, no weekend hours in the summer at all. They're twenty four hours all other days except summer weekends.
Okay.
Yep, um.
But isn't the need on the weekend? Right.
Yeah, it is, but that's what I'm saying. We allow it from eight to ten.
Yeah, but you, you said during the week.
No, on the weekend, yeah, not even on the weekends.
Right. Yeah, I kind of feel like you might want to do the weekends, like eight, eight to ten. It's just going to be. That's where the conflict's going to become the other, the other soccer.
After, during or after the Saturday concerts after.
Like people riding.
On the conflict, people like Spike, they're constantly.
And look, I gotta tell you.
July.
I ran the, we, we have like one ordinance violation for biking.
No, it's just, they'd ask to get off.
It's, it's kind of like, yeah, unless they're actually defining it with it.
Right.
Take better action, but, um, yeah, I don't think it's.
Why don't we take a stab at a, at an ordinance amendment? Where we could extend it eight to ten in the summertime during the week. See where that goes.
And I would ask, they, they.
If you want to speak, they get it. So you have to get up to the microphone and get your.
Consider it a weekend as well as Memorial Day.
Right.
Well, what do you want to do the rest of the year?
Well, Nicole, why don't you get with chief? Put something together. You've heard our comments and then see, throw it around as a draft. We can all make our comments on it. We'll have public then when we get to the public second.
Also changing daylight to a hour.
Yes.
Daylight to hours. So what hours will be to, to ten o'clock?
Yeah, during the off season like now.
Yeah.
Right, I'll cover it around. What do you want? Till ten o'clock? Cause presently it says daylight hours. Except for July, July first to Labor Day, it's where you have the hours six to ten or six to noon. Um, but otherwise, the rest of the year, it's daylight hours.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's.
Will it all be same all year?
No.
Oh.
The other thing was, the chief just mentioned about Memorial Day. This has, it's, it starts the summer essentially July first.
Right.
So I don't know if you want to back that up. That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, that, that takes care of one of your difficult days.
The Memorial Day, like maybe the Friday before Memorial Day weekend?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I looked at like a couple of other sort of ordinances they spell out the holidays. If they do that, like if we.
Yeah.
Well, we won't put that on sign. That'll just.
Longer than the weekend they spell out.
But in the off season, you're looking to go to ten P M?
Yeah, yeah.
So all year and it's not, it's just till ten P M, no.
In the off.
No six to, no eight to ten.
And the summertime, eight to ten, right?
I'd say six A M to.
Yeah, it starts in the morning hours. So I don't know when you.
Six A M to ten P M in the off season.
It's six A M.
And then summer, there's mornings on the weekends and then the evening hours.
And then summer, six A M to ten P M, except the weekends.
Summer is six A M to noon.
Traditional.
I've, during the week.
It's during the week.
During the week, you don't have.
Yeah.
On the weekend.
Off at eight A M, right?
Right.
But the weekends will be six A M to noon and then eight P M is at ten.
Correct. Okay with that.
We're gonna need big, large sign.
These are the biking hours. We're going to drag one of those trailers up one of these days, bury the bar chart.
Get a plane.
And a batter plane, a batter plane.
I have the. Global advertising.
Yeah, in the summer.
Yeah, during, this is a.
Trailers for Ben's bike. He can just drag it up the board.
During, during the week in the summertime, it's all day long?
No, it's not.
It is now, yeah.
It is now.
It's now?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it stopped at, at ten.
No, only on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, then we're going to keep that.
But we're going to, it's time, G Y, it's all ten.
Put its time to it, except on holidays, correct?
So then, so it's always going to be six A M to ten P M with the exception of the weekends in the summer and holidays.
Correct.
Correct.
That's a better way of putting it.
And then the summer weekends are eight to ten?
Yes.
At night?
At night.
Six A M to noon?
Six to noon.
To noon and then eight to ten, eight P M to ten.
Yeah.
Play back the recording of the meeting.
Yeah.
And.
Chief, that makes sense? Is that what, what you're recommending? Okay. And then the other aspect of it, we had talked about it back in March, I think, about pedal assist.
Right.
And differentiating that from these throttle bicycles that are basically motorcycles.
Right.
You know, they're just. So I know we kind of ended that discussion without doing anything on it. Um, we'd like to circle that back up. We don't have to dive into it again tonight unless you guys have.
Well, Lance, I think the, the issue that, that left us stumped back in March is still the same issue and that's from an enforcement standpoint. It's almost impossible for the police to distinguish between a pedal assist and a battery operated one that's a block away, you know?
So here, here's, here's where you get the, and this is just giving teeth to what we have. So, so as long as someone's up there, they're, like chief said before, acting appropriate, driving the bike cautiously. And they're not flying down at full throttle at thirty five miles an hour, which these bikes will do. But once that person is on that throttle bike doing thirty miles an hour, we do stop him. We have more teeth saying, look, you're not allowed to be up here. Here's the fine. If it's a pedal assist guy and they don't do it, you got to pedal like crazy to get them up to twenty miles an hour. Um, that's what I'm looking to get, just so we have some way to, there's, there's, I don't want to say elderly, there's seniors out there that that's their exercise. That they need that, that pedal assist to be able to get them out and do something. Um, that's what I'm, the niche I'm trying to help with. That's the people that came here those, those times back in the spring, asking if we could do something. Um, I'm just looking for a way to try and help that part of the population out. Um, I don't know the answer. Uh, I know it's difficult for, and I don't want our, our specials or our police officers out there, you know, stopping everybody. Hey, is this a battery bike or not? It, it's something that if you do stop them and you, you see that there's a throttle on it, which it's, it's kind of obvious, um, when you stop them. Um, that's something you can, some of them don't even have pedals. They just have pegs. They don't pedal at all.
Right.
Um.
Footrests.
They're just footrests. Um, John Henderson had one buzzing around the, the, uh, ski beach for during Seafood Fest. And that thing will do thirty five miles an hour. It does burnouts. It's crazy. Um, what's that?
That's a motorcycle.
It is. It absolutely is. It looks like one. Looks like an off road, you know, uh.
My, my concern is the unintended circumstances of people that don't understand the ordinance. When you say electric bike, is it going to be everybody with, no matter what type of electric bike is the more higher power to the other? They're gonna, it's gonna end from coming from Atlantic City. There, you're gonna have, you're gonna, it's gonna feel like open season for electric bikes no matter what.
But they're up and in.
We are going to have to post officers up there to slow it down if we do that.
Yeah, and
I mean, I think you're going to get more.
Going up with a classification type of bike that's kind of out there. The state's kind of going that way.
Yeah.
Rockers. I talked to two of the bike shops right here. That classification that we're looking
To allow.
Permit, they don't sell it. If they sell, aren't they, they sell like two.
But people might have them from other towns.
Um, no, but just they're, they're, they're much more expensive. And the other bikes have better kind of abilities of going faster and with less propelling.
Chief, we're hearing, a little bit off topic, you're hearing that the, the state is going to require helmets and things and have those, those, I can't even call them bicycles.
Yeah, I think so.
They're going to have to follow traffic laws.
Well, they have to follow traffic laws because they're considered a bicycle.
Yeah.
But we know how that could be.
Yeah.
But they're kind of in between, so they get on sidewalks and sidewalks.
Route thirty on Monday and I'm slowing a bit of traffic, like I had to go forward, gallery and I'm seeking and guy can do a thirty five hour drive, right? Right through the red light, made it in time, but no, no, going the wrong way. I'm going west, these companies down.
Yeah.
You see it all over.
Manhattan is, is a complete, a, it's a free roll in Manhattan.
I think based on a lot of it, now you're starting to see, unfortunately, you're seeing fatalities. You have one in Frank City.
I just saw that, yeah.
Um, kind of the touch area, um, so I think the state's.
Okay, maybe, maybe we just hold the, the pedal assist stuff until the state comes out with some better regs on them. Um, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just want to keep the discussion open because I do get asked about it all the time.
Oh, yeah, so do I. And I'm just fearful that if we allow that one component, now we've lost enforcement aspect of it and it's a previous law.
Right.
And they are dangerous.
Yeah.
They are. It's not the person riding with it still.
They're the person that get hit.
Well, yeah, I mean, those things are heavy. We have two downstairs.
The, the one I got from the, the P B A.
Yeah.
I can't lift it alone.
Yeah, so.
It's, I can, but it's, it's difficult.
What's, what does Atlantic City allow?
None.
And I talked to Chief R. Jose, uh, he'll text me whenever, allow me.
There, that's where they're.
Anything going to rise completely.
Yeah, and they have the same problem. We say, they enforce it.
When there's a police.
All right, I, 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 I agree. I think we keep the conversation going and when the, when they become insured and they become a little bit more regular.
Registered and all that kind of stuff, yeah. All right. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I will. I'm okay with table on that part of it.
All right.
So.
I just want to point out one other piece, but in looking at the bicycle ordinance, if we're going to be changing those hours, there's a lot of stuff in here that's probably outdated and should be cleaned up. So it would be my recommendation to kind of
Hundred percent.
Do it all at once if we're going to be.
Mention of staying in the bicycle path and things like that.
Yeah, that's gone. There used to be a path up there.
And even like registering or having them inspected by the fire department.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, just need to do some.
Use a bell, like it's just on there.
Yes, a bell.
There is.
Yeah.
It's on there.
Yeah.
Great.
Lights and reflectors, brake requirements.
Have you seen the button now? It's like a buckhorn? I want one of them.
Thanks.
So it, it'll be a bit of a overhaul on that to bring it up a speed.
Yep, all right. Um, next, we, okay, move on to the next one?
Yeah.
Everybody, uh, suspension of parking meters. I think we, 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 through Tom, talked about this a little bit. Um, we, I did a bit of a table and analyzing what other cities do when I met with, um, the B B A on the subject. Um, Asbury Park doesn't care. They meter everything, every day, every month. But we are, we are a little bit more restrictive than other cities like Wildwood, Ocean City, Cape May, Seaside Park, Point Pleasant, Elmar. Um, we are metered in April and in October. And, um, where others are not in some cases. So anyway, we, we kind of discussed this, um, and have a model ordinance. Does anybody give any other comments on that? Anybody else?
Um, I think to date that, that we have been kicked around, I think kind of bring everybody's comments into, into one. I mean, we're all different on the dates, but this kind of.
Well, I think what we're looking, this is going to be kind of a two step process too, though. We're, we're looking tonight to do a resolution that deals with the upcoming season from November first through March thirty first. And then come back with an ordinance that addresses whether you want to go from, uh, November or October.
Right.
And put that in an ordinance so we don't have to do this every year. You can just
Right.
modify that as the rule.
And the signage can then reflect it.
Yeah, what I think, and I'll ask Rick if we can reach out, I don't know if yours or, um, Lisa reaches out to Park Mobile. That's getting them to have signs posted on each of their Park Mobile signs that it's a parking holiday from this date to this date for this year.
They don't supply the signs that they're expected for modifications to be purchased.
Right.
Uh, from that, we choose.
Or we can do our own.
But the, but the app will notify you. If you, if you sign in and try to park, it'll tell you that they're not accepting.
Okay, I'd still like to get some signs up if we could. Maybe not on every post, but most of them. Um, and then splash it out, social media and our website.
That'll, that'll go up, assuming you adopt this resolution, that'll, you know, tomorrow.
We have a plan, knowing that this was kind of coming.
The existing signs.
Uh, well, with a plate, maybe, yeah, with a plate.
Plate that right over the top says, no parking.
Right.
Parking fees from this date to this date, right over the Park Mobile signs. That when the season opens back up.
You pull it off.
What are we doing on the boardwalk?
Accept the charges, won't accept anything, anybody. This, because each block has one or more
Yeah.
Park Mobile signs, we just say, I'm right over the top one, so no fees for parking from this date to this date.
I like that. Yeah.
So we change it next year? We have to redo all the signs?
No, it would be like we do on the boardwalk where we flip the ones on the back.
No, no, if we.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if we go to October first.
I'm on the fence on that one, but.
Yeah, I think there's still debate about that. October might still be a, a day.
Anything you don't raise in parking meters winds up in the tax rate.
Right. Yeah.
I think from November first.
Yeah.
Me too. So I, I think we're leaning in that direction. So I think that would be we can make these signs up and get them started.
That would put us square in the middle. Um, Cape May meters, October, Seaside Park, Point Pleasant, Belmar, they all meter in October. Where Wildwood, Ocean City.
Through March.
Through March.
So what was, what was B B A's business and, and I don't know if it was BBA putting that position out, or was it just certain members or attendees at the event? Were they, what were their thoughts on it? They don't want it at all?
No. No, they were, um. I tried to circle back with them to get a consensus, and I think they were. Um, to be honest, it didn't, they, they, they were more concerned about the. The use of the app, it felt like, but I think they were on board with, uh, extending it. Um, I think the whole point of it, and they understand is that it's too, um, I think they're appreciative of extending it. They were. The whole point of it is to drive, is to allow more people. Um, to, to park in the downtowns because the other, you know, more easily without being. The, the threat of getting a ticket, it's, you know, in the off season, and which also focuses on locals. So I think it's a way to. To assist the business districts in that way. Um, and they, they were.
Did have some complaints you said there last year from businesses.
Yeah, so that's where, that's where the discussion led to, um. Uh, you know, some people thought you shouldn't, we shouldn't have it on Dorset Avenue, but except the businesses that were there said, no, we, you know, we want to have. Parking enforcement on Dorset Avenue because all of the businesses have a residential component near them in some way. So. Um, I think it was, I think it was clearly that, I, I don't think I'm, I'm speaking for them to say that they were. They, they would appreciate a larger grace period.
Now, last year, I think we excluded the municipal lot, didn't we? You can, you still pay to use the municipal lot?
Well, all season, the municipal lot, September. Uh, to what, uh, the, the two municipal lots and Marston Place are.
I think with Mr. Benzo someone was.
Oh, that's the municipal lot on, on Newport.
That's twenty-four hours a day by work. It's three sixty-five.
Right.
You're talking about Newport, New Haven, Marston, some, some.
I think he's.
They're the section that's seasonal in the waters.
Yeah.
Right, but the municipal lot last year, when we did the free parking. I think that one still required parking fees. The lot did.
I think that, I think that confuses it, don't you?
Yeah, I would, I would say we pull that out of there.
Pull that out of there and make that for those months.
So.
If it's free parking, it's free parking in our business district. That's in our business district. I think it's confusing. Look, I'd rather, I'd like to get the revenue, revenue.
People that aren't using the business district parking.
Probably.
You get some, you get some residents that'll park there.
But, but this, but the city is.
They have a deal with the church, they park it.
But the city is basically, I mean, that's the whole thing about parking in this town. We, we have a parking issue for a hundred days of weekends.
Yeah.
Not now, not right now. My street is practically empty and most of it is city hall workers.
That's probably why we still had money in those months too.
Right.
Well, we had the meters too. People were still putting money in the meters even though it was.
Right.
So we still had income coming in, but we also had the lot. I forgot about that.
I don't.
Yes, I don't think that lot produced much.
I don't think.
It was cheaper to park on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't think the lot gets much in the.
No, I, I would include that in the.
I would try to keep it as simple as possible and make it all the same.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the plan is, and I think the resolution is worded that way, so you're waiving parking fees. On November first to March third.
Includes everything.
Third.
Good.
Yep. I mean, if you, if I would.
Parking and the residential permits are still required.
Right.
That's gonna open up that municipal lot. To those businesses and those residents that are gonna stay in there. One thing to remember that we still have on veteran Dorset Avenue is street cleaning. So technically, the car has to be moved every Monday or every Wednesday with kind of applications. That municipal lot's gonna be.
Gonna be sold with people moving.
It's gonna be used.
Yeah.
Just sort of.
It's gonna be used.
Run the cars off the street.
I think he's saying it's not gonna be able to be used and it's gonna have.
Right now, they're not using it because they had to pay for it.
Been there.
So.
There's a chance that somebody could park a car in there and could sit there for six months. Whatever the time figure you're looking to.
Yeah.
Technically, no, because the street cleaning is gonna rack up tickets.
Right.
The street cleaning was there could be.
What if we didn't know overnight?
Thirty-nine.
What if you didn't?
Municipal lot, we have, you know, other businesses that.
You can put a minimum on the lot.
What if you didn't know? No overnight parking.
I'm not as worried about it.
Yeah.
No parking for more than seven days.
Seven days, right, seven days, right. Who's gonna track that?
No overnight.
So, someone that, someone that, that'll, someone that complains will track it and then we'll figure that out. But I, I, it's. Again, it's not, right now, there's plenty of parking. So I don't think they'll fill that lot up. I'm willing to take that gamble to keep it the same.
I would do no overnight.
I don't know if I've ever seen a car parked.
Uh, though, well, the businesses there, where actually there was the next conversation was to reopen up permit parking with those businesses.
And so the farmer's market.
Could you support those unregistered vehicles, trailers?
No, because it's still a city.
Yeah, they have to be registered.
We, yeah, we got so.
Yeah.
Yes, because that's.
Yeah. Um, I, I still think it makes sense to keep it same and deal with those on a case by case.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Turns out to be a problem. We'll revisit.
Yeah, I, I, I would say keep it all open and then if it becomes a problem, we address it.
Right. Is that enough to move forward at that for the next item or?
Well, this one, this one's just for this year, so.
Right.
Yep.
All right, so we'll, we'll add that to the bench.
Yep.
That is three oh one.
Yep.
And. Do we want to discuss three oh twos? Or no, we're still in discussion, I.
You could, it's your choice if you'd like to talk about your topic of discussion with, with the Echo Park, or you can do that.
We had that as number four. So the Echo Park, I, it's, this will be briefed. Um. Just in keeping with our master plan, there's a. There's a portion of our master plan that calls for an ecological park potentially in a tract of land. Known as Glass Beach and known as a former city dump and known as a lot of other things. Um, so over the years, I've been, um. Advocating for that master plan, um, to some way, start in some way or another to, to move that forward. Um. Over the last few weeks, um, ACIT reached out to me, uh, to propose a conceptual design. For their students over the next few months, though, uh, so I met with them, um, last week, and there are two of their instructors. Their intent is to do a topographical map and do some conceptual plans. Um, for, uh, their students and then present them at the League of Municipals. So I think the, the, I think it's an interesting opportunity because there are a lot of. Um, a lot of people in that field that work through ACIT, um, that could offer a lot of, uh, education to the students. And you never know, sometimes the best designs come when you don't know what you don't know, and you try something a little bit out. That might not be, um, not, might not, would not, not be hampered by conventions that we all learn as designers over the years. So I'm curious to see how that plays out. Um, I, I, I invited them to join a base camp free website that allows us to keep, um. The documents that I've, um, kind of gathered over the time that they're using. So that's, um, that's that. Coincidentally, the DEP. Um, uh, contacted us about diversion issues that I think we're working through as much as we possibly can. Under the deadline for this year. Tom, if you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm not sure you want me to.
Okay. Okay, we can talk. Um, it's a little bit of frustration. I can see that, but the Green Acres management and, uh, and the land compliance representative. Um, seem to be chasing each other around emails over that. And then, um, in that conversation, I reached out to Ed to ask him what, um, maybe some of the Ed Stinson here, our engineer. What's some of the pathways forward for this sort of thing, just so I could understand what the concepts, what the path would be and maybe what the pricing would be so that. Wait, so that, you know, they could, I could have an attainment, whether I'm shooting for an attainable goal or not. That's, so, um.
Whether you want Green Acres funding.
Yeah, right.
They might not want their money.
But, so just, so. The impetus of this whole, not the impetus, but the cause of this. Problem with Green Acres was they tore down the ice rink that was built in the seventies with Green Acres funds. We now have to replace that same beachfront space with equal valued property. That's what's difficult. So.
But, but the only thing that that holds us up from, and this is really what the email was the other day. It holds us up from applying for any Green Acres funds. Uh, I don't think we need Green Acres for this project that we're talking about, at least not at this point in time. We're, you're developing a concept plan, you put out an RFP, we've gotten, uh, something back from Colliers through Ed. And, and I think maybe you want to touch on that, but, but we're still working and trying to resolve that issue of the diversion. Uh, we met with representatives from Green Acres a couple of times this year. They required us to do a pre-appraisal survey of the properties. That we were looking to, uh, come use for compensation and of the, uh, diverted piece. And submitted to them for their team to review. We did that. We sent those, uh, surveys several months ago at this point. That was a prerequisite before we could hire an appraiser to do formal appraisals for. The diverted property and the compensation property, and hopefully we get those and we're able to work out the numbers and make it work. Uh, what's immediately at stake is that they're still holding three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant from. Several years ago, I guess it had to do with the fishing pier. Uh, and we can't get those funds released until we settle this diversion issue.
Right.
And then, but again, and the, the immediate, that's the immediate thing. And then the other is that until we get it diverted, we're not eligible to apply for funds.
Okay.
They did release a big chunk of that money after we met with them.
They did.
Their first year.
Right.
In office.
That was most of the, the pier house.
Money, but.
Yeah, you did get a nice chunk of money, but they're holding the last piece of it.
Okay.
It.
But that doesn't hold us up from doing these.
It does not, no.
What about the school issue? Is that the school issue or we?
You know, that, that's a separate diversion issue and we're not dealing with that.
Okay.
So, so I, so, um, so after talking to Ed about this, he recommended he look at some of our, our pool of engineers. That might have experience in this and, um, and Colliers, which is a very large company. Didn't put together a, a brief of sorts, which I was very impressed by. Ed, you had that? Do you want to talk about what the? Possible maybe baby step would be for that? I, because I, I do feel as though there's enough. Gain either federal or state or. Local or private funds to do some of this in the future, and I think this is where you could step.
And I, and I think generally to that point. You start something, start with a conceptual plan, maybe do some environmental, um, work out there. And you have something to present as part of an application. Maybe, maybe that, that kind of scores a little higher in those, in those various applications.
Than others in comparison to other cities that might have applications.
Correct, just an application, we want to do this. So I, I did reach out to three of the, um, firms in our pool of engineers. Sent them the kind of the scope of work that the green team had put together, kind of the concept. Um, RFP. Uh, and I, I, I said, as kind of the, the top priority. Uh, for experience in doing this kind of work. So, so. If you have experience, share that experience, um, and, and break down how you would approach this eco park. And Colliers is the only one that responded, and, and they showed in their, in their response, they, they do have experience. They work. Uh, with the city of Hoboken and, um, Camden, those, there's a few in the response. Um, similar, not, not exactly the same, but along the water front and natural trails. Uh, so I do feel that they, they have a team that, that has experience. Uh, they have a team that has experience in, uh, various grant funding that could help. Help us or help identify for us opportunities maybe for additional grant funds. Uh, and they, and they kind of laid out a plan. It's, it's like eleven tasks. Um, and how. They would approach and each task has a theory associated with it, on how they would approach the design. Um, and then, and then Tim, you asked that I, I reach out to them and find out like. Can we do it in, in phases rather than do all eleven? Rather than a road or contract for eleven tasks. Then we start with task one, which was the conceptual plan. So I did have that conversation with Colliers today. Um, and they felt, they feel as though, um, you need the environmental look as well. So task one and two in the proposal.
Right.
Task one is a conceptual plan, task two is an environmental impact and, and an environmental review. And so I thought that, that was. Those two together are, are very important. Um, and then you also went one step further, task. Four and six, which is the trail and pathway plan. And also the educational piece. But they're important, and it really depends on, on how detailed you want the conceptual plan to be. Environmental piece is important because you've got to identify areas that you're not going to be able to, um, disturb.
Right.
And that you should protect. Um, but if you want to start. Having an idea of where maybe you could lay out trails and lay out observation decks and things like that. That's task four and task six. Six would be the educational piece that would go along with the trail. So their recommendation is if you're looking at a phase, the very minimum phase. They would suggest is tasks one and two. Which is a conceptual plan with the environmental piece, but they, they went further to say we, we would recommend you do. As phase one, you would do tasks one, two, four and six. The conceptual plan, the environmental piece, the trail plan with the environmental component to that.
Right.
And that's, I think that in, in their numbers, that would be about. Doing all four would be about twenty-eight thousand. Uh, doing the first two would be about twenty thousand, just under twenty thousand.
So that would be, um, so I'm not suggesting that we make a decision on this today, obviously, but I just wanted to get it out there. So you, you see that this is where the number potentially would come up to, and it could be an investment for something that we then get. Further, um, get further along. And I think I was very impressed with their work. They had some spaces that they worked in that were much more challenging, I think, than, or as challenging. Peninsulas and, uh.
And, and old shipyard.
And old shipyard and things that had some environmental issues. That, but they, you know, and, uh, and, you know, they, it could potentially, there's a lot of stories, I think, that. That, that, that piece of property also that I think would bring to, that could, this, this educational piece could bring. Um, to the public as a, you know, as a, as an environment that is susceptible to. To flooding and, and, and all the environmental aspects of it, I think would be a, could be a huge benefit for not only our school kids, but everybody in the county. Um, it's such a large piece of property. And it would protect it from, from potential further development, which I think has been tossed around, not. You know, not, not all of it, but it, a large chunk. So I just wanted to put that out there for the both of you.
Yeah, and you know, earlier you mentioned, you know, there's some. You know, the possibility we can get some federal funding or state funding. I would still go back to the county and ask them for open space funding and. I would ask them over and over again and.
Every year.
They can say no ten times, but let's just keep asking.
Yep, well, I think this ACIT project is a great way to engage them and say, I want, I'd like you to come to these meetings. I'd like you to come and see what the students do, or they could be part of it. Um, it's your county too, and, and, uh, and, 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 you know, invite them. I agree, keep, keep asking. I. I knock on doors for a living sometimes, so I'm not afraid of being said no to a couple hundred times. Um, it happens, but, um, good. So, uh, I, I, I may bring it back up if. Um, depending on the timeline, did they give any indication of how long it would take to get one of those phases? Or a few of the, the, the first start, first phases?
You know, I, I didn't have a long conversation with them. I, I had a conference today, so I, I had about a ten minute. Opportunity to call, so I, I didn't get it into that kind of detail. We're gonna talk tomorrow. I just. Um, I just wanted to kind of get their thoughts on phasing it.
Yeah.
So.
My suggestion is that we, that we take that minimum step, uh, to do these first four, four phases. Because it's going to give you a product that you can then go out and sell. You know, when, when you're trying to raise money, you want to be able to say, this is what we want to do, and we want you to pay for it.
Right.
So you said, I'm sorry, you said phase one and two was twenty thousand?
So, so their, their proposal has eleven tasks.
Yeah.
Um, and they recommended. At a minimum, at the very minimum of the first two tasks, and they totaled nineteen thousand, five hundred thousand.
It was like fifteen and five.
But they urged us, they said, if you're gonna go really. The four tasks that you should do, and they would total about twenty-eight thousand.
Which includes the environmental assessment.
The environmental assessment, the trails.
Which are, I think, again, integral to the types of things that would appeal to people. The conceptual plan would appeal to the, the educational component and the people that want to use it for. Outdoor activities, but then the trail and then I think it's the whole. You know, the, the whole thing is keyed on the environmental assessment.
And, and we'll ask them, have Jim Retell look into possible grant funding for the design. For this stuff. That's, that's where I would reach out for him to.
Sure.
Look for that.
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to slow the process down, we do have money for this. We have, we have money budgeted in, in the operating fund for engineering this fits.
Right. Okay. Um, I'm in favor.
For four, for the four tasks?
Pardon me?
For the four tasks.
Yes.
And fund all four.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, move on.
All right, move on. Thank you. Uh, the last item that we had was the bid for the. Band shell at, um, the library structure. Tom, do you want to?
Uh, Nicole's asking me, do you want a resolution for the next meeting to. Authorize a contract with Colliers for these four tasks? Or you want more time to think about?
I, I would still like to look for some money, but that's my, you can get it done for free. I'd rather do that, but.
I, I understand. No, no, we've talked to Jim Retell about this, and I think, again, I would think once we have something more concrete. I'm not sure what, what sources there are, but we'll talk to Jim again.
He's been on the.
He's been, yeah, he's been helping us with the diversion issue. He's.
Long as we've reached out and asked, that's fine.
Uh. I'm not sure if you want to talk about how this also ties into the other project, the Living Shoreline Grant. Because that's also in this same plot of land, is it not?
Correct, it's on the far point of this land that's already been.
Right, and that's a grant for national wildlife, fish and wildlife.
Right, yeah. So I think also, yeah, so the Fish and Wildlife Grant, I think it was sixty thousand dollars as part, is, is meant to execute that. So that would be part of this design.
And then, yeah, we're gonna hook, we're gonna hit them up for more funds for this too.
Correct. Fish and Wildlife, the, uh, Rutgers. Correct. Fish and Wildlife, the Rutgers, Jacque So, and um a number of other groups are interested in the in being a part of it. So I think that'll help our broadcast, our and the and and the BECC and ACUA um are also interested. So I'd be okay with another, with an ordinance?
Be a resolution.
A resolution.
Just to enter the contract with Colliers. And I'll I'll call uh Jim, talk to him, to Jim Rattell.
Uh the next item is a bid for um received for the um band shell. Do you want to? I mean, we all, I think.
You you want to do it, you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay.
You've been talking to all of us about it.
Yeah, the uh, as you know, you, we have bid the Band Shell project twice now, once back in June. Uh bids came in too high, you rejected the bids, went back out, made some modifications to the plan to reduce some of the concrete work and the ramping and stuff like that. Uh the new bid we received this week on the seventeenth, uh and they're still over budget. The uh so the the recommendation at this point is to reject uh the bids again. Uh the mayor and I met with our architect this morning, or yesterday, when was it, this afternoon? At a Zoom meeting to talk about how we can scale it back. Uh and he has, I think, distributed a draft, very um preliminary draft concept plan for how to cut this back, basically, when it comes down to is essentially making it smaller. Uh small, a little bit smaller footprint, and with a target, we're going to go back out to bid with, I don't even want to put the number out there because then the bidders know where it is, but anyway, uh he thinks we can hit the number that we need to hit with that new uh proposal that you received today. I think I sent you an email, all three of you, with the bullet points of what we discussed. So that's the plan at this point going forward. And the first step is to reject the bids and to authorize him to redo the plans and go back out to bid again.
Yeah.
So I'm supportive of that. It just, we can't
Yeah.
Spending that, those kind of dollars on a band shell is not, it's just not fiscally responsible, so, you know.
Tom, when did you send the email? Because I'm having email issues.
Uh probably around two or three o'clock.
Oh, that's why, okay.
So the the but so he he discussed taking away some of the details, like the curve, making the size smaller, but the other one was fairly large. So this, the new the new footprint would be close, would be would be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen by twenty-four, which is still larger than the temporary stages that we put up there, that we got to the summer, which was very nice size. So it's that size, and it's on this side of the bulkhead, not the opposite. And and then it would have a different steel shape, not as not, taking away some of the curves, as I know with with design and construction, anytime you curve something, it triples the cost.
Greening the sidewalk.
Uh on the on the beach, on the beach side of the bulkhead, we we put the temporary stage on the street, yeah, so this is
It's not in the street.
No, it's not in the street, it's on the on the on the beach, on the on the sand, yeah. So I think there's some common sense things that'll bring it into a more realistic number, probably more appropriate for the amount of use, and then we can look at other things doing around it uh over over time.
That's a real, that's what Gilson out is just a quick
Sketch.
Sketch of of what he's thinking. It's smaller.
I like it.
Still very nice. It would still, I would still recommend we do it in the same types of uh
Materials.
Materials and finishes that we're using in other parts of the city, the gray, white, and red lettering.
And then there will be things that are not included in the contract that we'll do later, like landscaping and stuff like that.
Right.
And we can still get this done in time?
Hopefully. He's trying to get the bids out. If we do this tonight, he's trying to get the bids out in the next two weeks. Yeah, if we get the bids out and we get numbers that work, then we should be able to get it done by the summer.
Right. And a smaller project takes less.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So that would be three oh two, right?
Yes.
Yes, right.
Okay, now for those who have been patient to wait for the public comment portion. Um can I have a motion to open the workshop meeting for public comment?
So moved.
I'm second.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, at this time, the public may comment on anything we have discussed so far. There'll be another public comment set. Any to discuss anything you like. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We ask you limit your comments to uh three seconds. Three minutes.
When you're there, it's one north Nashville. Just some clarification points. Number one, on this land that you're talking about reclaiming, and is that out in the wetlands on that off of Westland Avenue? Is that where we're talking about, where the rain grows and everything?
It, no, the uh the land that reclaimed then, or the the proper possible park?
The park and well, well, everything you were just talking about with uh, you know, the hiring hours to do.
So there's a hundred and forty acres of land that is when you go towards the school on Lafayette Avenue.
Okay.
You head and drive towards the bay, follow that S turn, there's a way that you can go straight. It's called Glass Beach. There used to be a pump station there, and there's a beach where some folks go and pick up beach class.
Okay.
And then there's another direction where if you prior to that, you make a directly towards Atlantic City, that kind of frames it in an L shape of what that land is. If you go on our website and you look up the, there's a uh there's a drone footage of it.
Okay, I wasn't aware. So there used to be a an ice skating rink there.
So the skating rink was where the library was.
Oh, okay.
That was the diversion.
That's a different, okay, so that's a different greenfield. So you're trying to swap the greenfields funds?
In so many words.
Okay, now I have a better understanding. And as it relates to the bus hour extension, I'm all for it, because you all know I'm an avid biker. But I was looking to maybe get Saturday hours, you know, extended, you know, so that you could bike ride down the boardwalk to see the concerts on Saturday night. So maybe you might want to reconsider to having, you know, concerts start at six usually or five. You know, it may be nice to be able to bike your, you know, ride your bike down the boardwalk to to do the concerts as well.
Yeah, um there's a lot of walkers there too. So but
Since we're spitballing, it's still, and lastly, and the chief just left unfortunately, but as far as Atlantic City and the motorized vehicles on the boardwalk, they do not enforce it, because these people go swinging by bikers and people alongside the road, and then, you know, and and they wind up in in Venice as well. I don't know how how well, how many citations we've issued to take care of it, but it's, you know, I still see them on our boardwalk, especially now that summer's over.
So for for about three weeks, middle of the summer, ACPD was up there every day with with vehicles literally parked like a blockade
Wow.
at Albany Avenue and up the other end by Hard Rock, uh Ocean, I'll say. There was a, I gotta be very careful. Um hmm. This is blending jobs. Um there was an agreement between the CRDA and ACPD where those police officers were deployed up there for a period of three weeks. They were pulled back. They, we are hoping to get them back up there. This is Atlantic City issues, but it still affects us, St. Albans. Um and it helped when that was occurring uh in Atlantic City, that they were enforcing their bike rules, it helps us. Um because they, Atlantic City does have a lot more, so why the boardwalk, more of the motorized bikes are up there. But for three weeks, it was nice. I'd go up every day for lunch, and there was no bikes up there.
Right.
And if they did see one, they were on the PA right away, please get your bike off the boardwalk.
You're saying my motorized are regular.
Everything.
Yeah, they were kicking us off, yeah.
About three weeks.
Exactly.
Yep.
But the but the the biggest issue is motorized, both on our boardwalk and Atlantic Cities. And secondarily, they've, you know, I don't know where the state's at, and I don't know how much Trump we have with the state, but there's got to be some kind of regulations. These people are riding on the wrong side of the road, they're running through lights. They have no licenses, they have no insurance.
Kids.
It's not just kids, there's adults that probably have DUIs that are out there
Right.
driving bikes because they don't have a car, because that's their only method of transportation. And without 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 any tags or registrations, you're just going to have more DUI people driving motorized vehicles and want to hurt somebody.
I think that's where the state's going, this stuff that I don't
It's just terrible.
I spoke to Senator Paul Steen about it, and not necessarily just on the boardwalk, just if
I'm talking around on the dead, I'm talking around our service streets.
So
Yeah, that's a, that's a big issue.
Good.
That would also just reminded me that um in the past, we had arrows directing traffic on the boardwalk. And, you know, the people, some, I I'm not saying everybody will pay attention to it, but you you can cast a wider net and having people go in the right direction.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I don't know if you have control of this here now inside, if it's ever, if it's just we we got hearing really, I'm talking.
Yeah.
And the last thing I had was about the mercantile fees, which you had brought up already or not?
Yes, we did.
So is that, you're going to go a flat fee, whereas before on the on the short term rentals, there was an escalating fee depending on the sides. How is that going to, is that going to be revenue neutral, or is that going to be a revenue answer, or or some people are going to get a break for the diligence and others are going to?
You can take that.
Um nobody's going to get a break, so where we had it, where you had one bedroom, it was cheaper, now we're all going to be seven fifty.
And you know that's
So what the issue we ran into was our monitor of that, um I'm trying to think of the name of the company that we hired to do it, and I'm drawing a blank on it right now.
Compliance?
Host compliance, thank you, Nicole. Um they couldn't differentiate that in their system. So that's why we were having trouble doing that. Um so that's why we're just going to go to a flat fee, went to the highest fee, and we're paying seven fifty.
Uh so you made it painful then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with it then.
I thought you would be.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And again, if you have issues with the ones in your neighborhood.
Right.
Please call it in.
Will do.
Even if it's a minor thing, it it tags that site, that one, we can make sure it's licensed. Two, it goes on the record that they've been noncompliant. And if they keep doing it, we can pull their merchant deal. So I know you guys don't want to bother PD, but they're there for that reason, so.
All right, we'll do it.
Thanks, Ben.
Commissioner.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I actually just wanted to, I I believe it was a thousand was the highest.
Okay.
It was tiers.
So we did, we didn't do the, we did seven fifty.
It was five hundred, seven fifty, and a thousand, so they went with the
Middle one.
I thought that was a three tier.
Yeah.
Most were in the middle anyway, if I don't remember correctly.
And we'll look at it after this coming summer and see if, you know, if if it's not revenue producing.
How many, how many, do you have an idea of how many there were, how many were registered?
Two, two eighty, I think, something like that. That range, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety.
We feel that uh we're not getting short shaded on that, that there's other ones, you know, I mean, is your
As we hear about them, we heard about one on Marion, um that didn't have a license, and once they're advised that they don't have the license, they get they get so many days to do it, or they're fined, or they're shut down. Um they were advertising for less nights than were permitted uh for their number of bedrooms, and they've been advised of that. So that's when a complaint worked, and we found out about one and
But if you're asking about monitoring them, there is, that's part of the host compliance, correct?
Yes.
So they have an, they have an investigative part of that service where they, if they find, they they actively look for people that are advertising in our city and make sure that they are registered and they handle the registration. That's part of what they do. Have you, have we had many, has our monitoring service reduced that that weren't, were not legal?
I don't have numbers on that. I will say we've got limited complaints this summer.
Right.
With very few.
Um and that's the reason why Kurt, I think, brought it on, was that that we, it was, uh the 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 technology required that we have something that met that technology in order to enforce it. So we couldn't do it, you know, just by Well, I knew that when you were writing the ordinance, you said you had a monitoring service to be able to sort of help you with it, so. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Any um any comments on the Zoom room, Jim?
Anybody in Zoom wish to comment on any of the items that have been discussed?
Discuss so far.
No.
Thank you, Jim. Um I would like to ask for a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
I'd like to close the portion of the workshop, the workshop portion of tonight's meeting and call to order the regular session. Uh can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty six, twenty twenty four um regular meeting? Can I have a second?
So moved.
Second.
Kind of roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh we have a no ordinance introductions tonight. Um can I have a motion to open for public hearing, ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero two four?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Any public comment on the ordinance discussed for the seven fifty merchant deal license? Hearing none in the chambers and none uh any, none on the Zoom room, correct, Jim?
No, nobody in Zoom wish to discuss this uh this ordinance? No.
And I have a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Thank you. Can I uh can I have a motion to adopt resolutions by consent? Resolutions twenty twenty four dash two nine six through twenty twenty four dash two nine nine and adding twenty twenty four dash three hundred, three hundred and one and three hundred and two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, thank you. Lisa, can you read bills and payroll, please?
I have payroll in them from nine twenty nine to ten twelve twenty twenty four, and the amount of six hundred and thirty four thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars and two cents. We have bills in the amount of three million. Whoa, gosh, that, I'm sorry.
Sorry. My bill is one point and zero cents. Sorry, Lisa. We're still going.
I do a blood.
Somebody want to fill in the change, so sense what he means?
Jim, I have no sense.
And a motion to pay bills and payroll.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second, but I refuse myself from from the payment to the ACUA for three fifty one, three seventy point seventy seven.
Roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I see no announcements for safety reports at this meeting at this time. Uh Commissioner reports, Land, Commissioner Langria, do you have any um comments?
Um just one thing I said at our last meeting, to clarify, the pier is open all year long for key holders, want to make that very clear. Misspoke with the last meeting. What closes down at the end of the month is the bathrooms and things of that nature because of weather. We can't, the water out there would freeze, so we had to close those down for the winter. Uh the pier masters won't be out there after the end of the month. Um so the key holders are on their own after that. Um Today, we had our new street opening in Venner, Osprey Place. Uh we had a dedication of that this afternoon. Um we had Talon, which is the Osprey mascot for for Stockton. Um was very cool having having Talon there and Alex Marino and his team there brought brought that together, so it was nice. Thanks, Rick, for putting everything together. Signs look great. Um It was nice. We had Mark Greco pull the the um the bags. It's better, or something, maybe some burlap or something. Um pull the bag off the the one sign, he's the owner and and developer of um the plaza and has done a great job out there. It was a nice event. We had representatives from some, a couple of the stores there, Prevenza was there, Rattell's was there. Um right at the end, I saw Burger King guys coming over, so it was kind of nice. Um Rick had a joke for me to tell, but I didn't have time to to go through it, where Burger King was serving uh, you know, Osprey burgers and, you know.
Uh three wings.
Not three wings, that's what it was. Um just update on some of the some of the construction projects in the city. Traffic signals are moving well on Vennan Avenue.
Great.
Uh the drainage work is all complete, so the roads won't have to be shut down anymore, the side streets as much uh to get those pipes across. Um they're working on the flatwork, the concrete, and the uh the pole bases is ongoing. Um they've been moving pretty quickly, so we're we're happy about that. As long as the poles come in on time, we should be done for the for the springtime. Um Winchester Bulkhead.
A couple is a good question.
Sure.
Uh on um, there's a parade on December seventh that runs through there. Is there a plan to have that cleaned up someplace?
I'll work with Ed to make sure. I've I briefly talked to him about it. A good reminder, we'll we'll sit down and and talk about that and push things aside.
Somehow.
We had the same thing for when the county did their work, so
Right.
we can mirror that, that same um same contractors.
Right.
He knows the drill.
Good.
Um, good question, though. So Winchester having a bulkhead is moving along fairly well. Um we ran into an issue with our border with Atlantic City. Um their bulkhead that was recently replaced is already having issues. Um they either ran into some problems under under the the grade there. And they ran into material that the piling, not the piling, the sheeting didn't go through, so it's already listing outward. Uh we can't tie to that. So Ed and myself reached out to Atlantic City, uh their engineer and their uh legal team, I think Nicole you were on some of those emails as well. Trying to get them to hire Walters either through us or on their own. I think they're taking the tack to hire them on their own to fix that. It's a lot cheaper for them to do it while Walters Marine is on site. Um we have a decision to make. We have some sheeting, steel sheeting that we pulled out that was already in our project. We pulled it out to replace with all new stuff. If they do it through us, or even if they do it on their own, If they do it through us, or even if they do it on their own, we might include, allow them to use that sheeting to save them a few dollars. I just want a good bulkhead. Um, so if you guys are amenable to that, I, I'm, Ed's gonna get me a price on what that sheeting costs. It's probably thirty feet of, of, of sheeting that we'd have to kind of donate to their project to make ours sound. If we don't tie to them and we do just a return, the water is gonna come in.
Hmm.
So we want a solid bulkhead going across there. It's poor construction. Their A C is in litigation with their contractor on it. Um, and that's gonna take time to, to resolve. So we just want to get it done and get it done right. Poor materials on their, their part. I think they had some issues with.
Yeah, it looks different in the water.
Well, they used fiberglass.
Fiberglass.
Using steel.
I see. Oh, I see.
When you use steel, if you hit something in the ground, it goes right through it.
Right.
Hopefully not a pipe, but, uh, the, the fiberglass will bend.
Right.
And Ed thinks that's what's happening there.
Is, um, is the bulkhead getting, are we gaining sidewalk? It looks like it's.
So forward. So we did move it out towards the water.
Yeah.
So we will gain sidewalk and that up, that end by Atlantic City. We've always had sidewalk for most of it.
Yeah.
We will be adding sidewalk to tie in to Jackson Avenue.
Looks like a couple of feet.
Yeah. Well, it'll be at least four.
That's nice.
So it'll be a, a good, good sidewalk width there. Um. Beach replenishment, did they agree to that meeting? They're gonna, we're gonna host it here?
Yes.
Okay. So November first, I believe it is. It's next first, next Friday here. So Army Clay reached out to us to host their, um, island-wide pre-con meeting. Um, I can't be there, but Tom and Ed, you're gonna, or at least Ed's gonna be there. Um, just so we have a say in what's happening there. Um. That's the major stuff. Um, Vennett Pirates, um, I did get to attend their pep rally last Friday. That was fun. Not, you know, it was mostly for the kids. A lot of parents were there. Uh, they appreciated. That the city is supporting them. Our taxi squad finished the season undefeated. They have playoffs this Saturday. Um, at one o'clock, they play for the championship. So. So they're, they're doing good. Taxi and I think the, um, the second group did very well this season. RC not so well. The rebuilding.
Are they playing at one field?
They are. We're hosting the, the championship. So, um, yeah, if one of you guys could stop by, I will, I will not be in town. Um, last thing, um, you know, it's gonna get emotional. So if you've read recently, there was a plane that went down out in, out the upper left in Washington State. Um, part of Evan's group, my son. Um, his, it was not his plane. It was not his type of plane, but it was pilots that he knew.
Uh.
Um, it was what they call a growler. It's an F eighteen. Um, it's an electronic warfare plane that. A pilot that Evan flies with on a daily basis. It was his wife that was the pilot of the plane. Um, two female, um, pilot and rear, um, both well-decorated, um, military pilots. One was a marine. Um, just, it's a shame. They don't know what caused the, the crash yet, but it's, um. It's a tough time for those guys right now.
So sorry.
It's, he's, he's having a rough, rough week. So just thoughts going out to those guys. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry to go on a, on a down end and on a downer, but.
No.
It was a rough week for him.
That, that, we appreciate it. Thank you. Um.
That's all I have. So.
Thanks.
Again, sorry to end on a, on a sour note, but.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's pretty much business as usual, usual and revenue and finance, but, um, we have begun working on the budget. And, um, we're looking at a new payroll system and new time clocks that everyone will use.
You have to give blood. So is that movie Gattaca? Everybody watch that?
Right.
So you had that action on your finger and.
I, I met with Amy today and she's pretty excited about what she saw, um, so far. And I think she's gonna schedule another demonstration.
We, we are gonna schedule one for you.
Yep.
Demonstration. You're gonna give it, right? With that same tone?
You're gonna miss me in negotiations. So that's all I got, really.
Um, thank you. I just have, uh, one thing I, I was shared with by the, um, Chief Cahill, the Fire Department. Um. Just another example of how I think you kind of take for granted, I take for granted some of the mundane things that they do that are actually very important. So they're using this cloud-based, um, text, text, um, program with, uh, all of their, um. Uh, inventory. And you think of inventory and it may be something that's not, that you think it might just sound like busy work, but this, this program, P S tracks is a. A digital inventory that so no longer if a officer or a, or is someone on the platoon. Um, uh, is keeping track of things, they have to go to a file to find out if they, those, those, um, those, those. Uh, assess those, those tools. I think about a ladder truck that has, um, everything from chainsaws to jaws of life to. To, uh, a half a dozen battery operated tools that all have to be maintained. And it's not like you can afford, um, batteries not to operate when you're in the middle of the night and you need lights and you're on a, on a, on a, uh. On, in a situation. So, um, he's found that, um, that, uh, he's given the guys up until the beginning of the year to get, uh, versed in this program. And, uh, he said in, in a number of weeks, just a few weeks, they've all, um, become very proficient in it and feels that the. The, the digital inventory will keep, um, the record-keeping and, uh, the efficiency, uh, and most likely the, the. The upkeep of those, um, all, all in the, all in the cloud and, um, out of paper and also, uh, easier to access. So, um, and this is every, every piece of, um, uh, 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 of equipment that we have. So it's a big, it's a big lift. He's doing a great job. Wanted to share that.
We truly thank him for bringing the guys out today too.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. He's good. I will. He's, he's, I always appreciate that as well.
Wanted to bring Talon in on the, he's not allowed.
He's not checked out.
No, he's not checked out.
Um, that's all I have. Um, if, uh, it's okay, I will, uh, ask for a motion to open the meeting to public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. So to open the meeting to public comment now, in the public to discuss any topic of interest. Uh, if you have any topic, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Any topic at all. You're done.
I'm done for the night.
Any, uh, any, anyone in the Zoom virtual room that has any comments for any topic at all?
Everybody's left.
Gone?
Yeah, there is nobody in Zoom.
Oh, sorry. All right. Um, can I have a motion to close public comment then?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Lisa.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. I believe we have executive session tonight. Lisa, would you please read the disclosure?
New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act connects the discussion of certain matters within executive session as an exception to certain provisions of said law. The vendor CD Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session.